Um, Michael Spake?
No.
Bill? No. Change for me?
Dr. Steve Ockinger.
Oh, yes, that's right. Yes, Dr. Ockinger. And is he on?
Yes.
He's, thank you so much for joining us and we really appreciate that and I apologize for my miscue.
No, thank you. No problem. Uh, thank you very much for finding the time today to hear from me.
Well, we would love to get, um, you know, it can't be a totally comprehensive assessment, but an overview of where things are standing from your perspective today specifically with the Lakeland community.
Okay, yeah. Again, I just want to thank the commissioners once again for, uh, you know, taking the time to hear from, uh, hear from the medical community. I think that we go play a, obviously, an important role in being able to advise and provide, provide expertise so that our leaders have, um, fact and information that they need to make wise decisions. I do want to start by, uh, saying that it's amazing that the, how, how, how long it seems that this is taking, how quickly it's gone by. It seemed like it was, uh, months ago that I addressed you, but I guess it was just a couple of weeks ago and so much has changed in that time. It's just been an incredible breakneck pace and we've just been struggling to keep up. So I would want to start just by talking a little bit about how this has impacted the clinic as a whole. And I think that we could be viewed as a, a microcosm of how this would impact all, you know, private, private physicians in the area, um, for sure, and probably across the state. And what we're doing, what, oh, what we're seeing in the numbers, um, try to give you some insight into up-to-date information so that you know kind of what I know, uh, so you can make, you know, important decisions for the public health of our community. This last month has been really the tale of two executive orders. Uh, I can't overstate enough, um, how, uh, the first executive order from, um, from our governor has really impacted Watson Clinic operations. We understand these are very necessary, so I think that I can certainly speak from firsthand knowledge of the economic pain that these decisions have inflicted on our community. And at the same time, I can understand how important they are, how important human life is, and how we just need to get, come together as a community, uh, and sort of tackle these issues. So to go to the first, uh, the first executive order being the, um, the prohibition on elective surgeries. Uh, this is a necessary step in the view of many, uh, in order to save supplies, to focus the healthcare practitioners on what's most important at the time at hand. However, I'm not so sure that it was anticipated the exact economic impact that such a move would have. Um, Watson Clinic had to move immediately to address this existential threat to our operations. Immediately upon this order, we, we, we received notice Friday afternoon and it took effect the next Monday morning. We immediately saw a drop of $600,000 per day in our revenue stream. This required us to idle our outpatient surgery operations completely within one week, finishing the few cases that we felt that we could legally do under the executive order and completely idling that operation. Uh, we even furloughed over 388 employees, uh, unfortunately, with anticipation that there will be more to come. It's been a devastating week. It's been the most difficult three weeks of my life, for sure. I've forgoen my administrative salary during this, this crisis. Our senior administrators have taken deep pay cuts, uh, because it just didn't feel right to have our, our employees suffer so much, um, and not, and not, and not have us feel the pain that they're feeling. So we, the clinic, fully understand that these are tough decisions you're making, but I think if you focus on what's best for the health of the community, you're gonna be, you're gonna be doing one, what's right, and also what will have the best economic impact in the long term. Because I think we just really need to get back to operations. The sooner we can get back to doing what we do here at the clinic the best, uh, I think the better off everybody is going to be. So I do want to congratulate the, the tough decisions that you guys have had to make, had to face. Um, the closing of the parks, while not a popular, um, decision, I think is, is the right one. The second executive order, which is really, um, spanned out to affect the entire community, again, is going to be causing other businesses, uh, to feel as much pain, uh, perhaps more than the Watson Clinic is. Uh, and I, and I feel for them because it's not easy, but I do think it's the right thing to do at this time. We just need to get this thing over with. So with that said, I want to give you a little bit of an update as sort of where we're at because we have definitely seen an increase in disease activity. All of this preparation, uh, we were kind of just sort of waiting for it to happen. I think our first positive case came in two days after I last addressed you, uh, about three weeks ago. Uh, and that was the first case, uh, in, in the Lakeland area. Since then, we have continued our testing program. Um, these are tests that are run on outpatients, uh, that are, uh, patients who are visiting our urgent care centers in, in the north and south of town. It's very interesting to look at the numbers and we look at how they've come by, uh, week by week. So in the first week, between March 13th and March 20th, uh, we sent out approximately 109, uh, tests and we got two, um, two tests which were positive, so two positive tests, one equivocal results, uh, in that time. And we're still wondering, we're still working on what to do with that one. But that's about 1.8% of the patients tested, um, had COVID-19 between March 13th and March 20th. The second week of testing, March 21st to March 28th, uh, we detected three more positive cases, um, on 85 specimens that have been received to date, uh, giving us about five, you know, approximately 5% of, of positive results. Now, the next week, March 29th through April 6th, these are going through results that are, that some of them we just received this morning. Uh, we have found six cases out of 51 results received yet. Uh, we have sent 102 specimens between March 29th and April 6th. We've gotten 51 results back and in those 51, we've already have six positive tests or approximately 11% a positive rate. So it's obvious, uh, eyeballing this, that the disease prevalence is increasing in the community tested. Obviously, what we are testing here are, uh, outpatients. These are folks who, most of them did not end up requiring hospitalization, but these are folks who were sent home and, and told to self-quarantine. Uh, so the disease is getting more and more common among people who think they might have it at this point. Now, with this increasing prevalence of the disease, um, we are anticipating further, uh, further needing, needing further care for the, um, patients at the hospital, at the hospital mainly. Because that's where I think most of the battle is going to be fought, if we're gonna use the analogy that this is a, this is a war. When we're seeing this increase in disease activity among patients who are in the office setting, uh, I would expect it to be reciprocal increase in disease activity among the in-patients, the people admitted to the hospital. Well, I don't, I don't want to speak for Lakeland Regional Medical Center. Um, they have their own numbers and, and they, uh, they may be seeing a similar increase. I would suspect that they are, but, um, so with that in mind, we, we're, we're working in creative ways. If we think about, are we prepared for this? Like, what is the worst case that's gonna happen? Uh, I think the hospital would need to speak for, uh, how they feel they are prepared in terms of the physical plant. Obviously, Lakeland Regional is a very large campus and it is, uh, there is room, uh, presumably to increase the bed capacity. But will we have the staff? Will we have the people, the manpower in order, womanpower in order to, to fight this? Uh, we're working with the hospital in creative ways in this area. One of them is, since we can't perform outpatient surgeries, we can't perform colonoscopies, we can't perform endoscopies, uh, we have, we have a lot of anesthesiologists, uh, who are currently, uh, not working or doing, uh, not a lot of work. We have, uh, certified registered nurse anesthetists who are currently, uh, not performing a lot of work. Uh, these folks can, we are currently working with Lakeland Regional to see if we can get some of our anesthesiologists to pitch in in the intensive care unit since they have critical care training, uh, if need be. Certified registered nurse anesthetists, uh, can work as ICU nurses. Uh, I want to, I want to emphasize to the, to the city commissioners that it's the nursing staff that's gonna face much more of the risk of this disease as time comes on. They're the ones who spend most of the time in the rooms, in the, uh, with the direct patient care. Some of our physicians who perform procedures on the airways, yes, they are at high risk, but, uh, for the most part, it's gonna be the nursing staff that's gonna shoulder, shoulder a lot of this burden. So having backup, uh, for our intensive care nurses, uh, may be something that we can use. But we're ready, you know, we're prepared, uh, if, if the hospital feels that they have that need. We're also identifying physicians or other, uh, nursing staff who maybe work mainly in the outpatient world, who would be willing to pitch in, in our urgent care settings or in the hospital if Lakeland Regional asks us to do so. Uh, we're already there. Our human resources department is working with theirs to identify, uh, such people and, uh, get a list going to see if, if, uh, if we do need to go down that route as practitioners drop out of the workforce due to mandatory quarantines. So in summary, uh, we've prepared, been preparing for this for a long time. Uh, we weren't prepared for the economic effects of, uh, so we're dealing with two crises at once. Uh, we were not really ready for, uh, the total impact of the governor's first order. Um, but we acted quickly and we're gonna be here. Uh, we're gonna continue our operations as normal as possible. The last time I spoke to you, I was tasked with, uh, can we bring telemedicine? I think that was a, that was a question or a concern of one of the commissioners. Uh, yes, uh, when I, at the last meeting, we had mentioned that we can get telemedicine up and coming quickly. Uh, we're now fully ready to go, so anybody with an iPad or an iPhone or a computer with a camera can connect to our telemedicine, uh, platform. And we've currently performed 867 telemedicine visits, uh, in the last two weeks, which is, um, which is good. Uh, I think that, you know, we would like to see perhaps more, um, but there are some barriers to it. Not everybody, believe it or not, there's a lot of, there are some people who don't have internet access in, in Lakeland. And I've run into a couple of them in my office the last week. They don't have these devices that everybody takes for granted right now. So if we can get those devices in the hands of some folks who maybe don't have that or don't have the expertise in how to work them, um, that might help us be able to reach out to some sick folks who are not appropriate to come to the medical office because of a quarantine or just not, physically not able to, or they prefer to stay at home for their own safety. Uh, I believe that our facilities are safe to come to. Uh, I come to work every single day. I don't wear a mask everywhere in the room, but I know the CDC just changed their guidance, so maybe I need to rethink that. But they are, they are safe to come to, but I do understand, uh, when a patient feels that it's better to stay at home and, and we want to accommodate them, uh, where they're at.
What is the telemedicine, um, site?
The telemedicine, they get to, uh, we have a patient portal that Watson Clinic patients, uh, generally, that's the first step, is they have to sign up for our patient portal. Uh, it is a, a website that they, they log onto and gets access to their doctor's office. From there, we have instructions that we can give out. It's on our webpage. The instructions on how to connect to the telemedicine visits, but patients will get telemedicines through our existing patient portal.
Very good.
Okay, well, that's, that concludes the-
Anything else? Okay.
Um, I don't know, the commissioners-
Well, football, Dr. Ockinger, thank you so much for the work that you're doing and, and doing it alongside Lakeland Regional Health as well, because I know that, that, uh, the whole medical arena at this point in time is one medical arena and, uh, that cooperation means so much and you're, you're doing a great job. And, um, the three most difficult weeks of your life is a strong statement. I think that needs to be something that people hear well because this is probably the next three weeks are gonna be some of the worst three weeks that we're going to see in this, um, whole crisis. So, um, are you com- comfortable with the triage levels of anticipated acceleration that exist from your perspective?
Yes, we have, I think that the, the questions are, in our mind, is how many cases will there be and how quickly will they come? Will they come over a long period of time? Will they come over a short period of time? We, we do have obviously limited capacity, limited capacity in our physical space to be able to treat patients with a highly infectious illness such as COVID-19. We have four negative pressure isolation rooms, which are not, not that common, um, for outpatient offices. Those are best technologies, that's more often seen in a hospital setting. But what we can do, uh, we're ready to do for the community. Uh, so there will, there will be, there will be a bit of a limit there. I think that COVID-19 is really gonna be a battle in the hospital and in keeping disease activity at a minimum as these patients go home. As more patients contract the illness and then get sent home from the hospital, how do we prevent them from, uh, infecting their neighbors, infecting the, the folks in their own household? So I think that's gonna be the challenge, uh, to keep our, to keep our case numbers as low as possible. So I don't think that the clinic itself, that we are going, going to be overwhelmed in that regard. We are 40% or 50% of the hospital's medical staff approximately, so we, um, you know, if we can protect, if we keep supplies of the personal protective equipment, um, appropriate so that all of our staff members can be appropriately protected, then nobody, and very few people, you know, contract this illness while they're working, then, then we're gonna be fine.
When you, um, look at things starting to get better, the numbers start to recede for Florida in terms of the number of, uh, positive tests that take place. How do you see that timing from your perspective coinciding with, uh, the liberalizing of parks and, and those kinds of, uh, arenas? Do you, how long do we wait, in other words, from a medical, uh, viewpoint, to respond to some of those changes?
Yeah, that's a difficult question to answer. I think that we want to not let our guard down too quickly. I think that we should continue to, we, we, you know, we, we've closed everything but essential services. We need to start coming back in a piecemeal fashion. You know, what is most essential? What is the lowest-risk activity? Recreation is obviously a, there are needed benefits to the community. Exercise, overall health, sense of well-being. We shouldn't underestimate the risks of keeping people cooped up in a, in their home for two to three, two to three months and the impact that that can have on mental health, for instance. So-
Being nice.
It, it is important. Uh, I would like to see, I'll just give you, I'll sort of answer in the way that we're viewing this. We view, I would like to see this two-month stoppage on outpatient surgeries. Uh, I think you should understand that this is not just, um, this is all procedures that are non-emergencies. So we're not, we're not injecting people's joints who have joint pain. We're not performing, um, screening mammograms. Uh, we're not performing, um, you know, well-women visits, these types of things that while they aren't to treat something that's immediately life-threatening, I think we all agree, are important things to keep everyone's well-being up, keeping your blood pressure. So we're looking really at that timeframe and that's gonna be, uh, we're two weeks into this, starting in our second, starting our third week now. Uh, if we can get through eight weeks of this, uh, I, I know that the Watson Clinic will be chomping at the bit to get back to operations as normal, but we only want to do it if it's safe, if it's safe for our patients. So I think that if we're not, you use that as a litmus test. If we're not, if it's not safe to get a mammogram, uh, is it safe to, for children to, 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 to be playing together on slides? These are difficult questions and I, I'm not being an epidemiologist or infectious disease specialist. I don't want to presume that I have that expertise, but these are the public health issues that, that you're gonna have to be facing, the decisions you're gonna have to be facing as you go forward. So I would say, look at what we've shut down and let's start things in a, in a stepwise fashion, things that we can keep safe, things that we can monitor, um, and that we can, can move forward and, and provide and allow people to get back to their life as normal as possible.
And so, and you're not responsible for this, so I don't want to put you on, on a, uh, in that position at all. But the, your suggestion or outlook would be that we ought to be thinking end of May before we would be thinking about really taking a look at, um, those kinds of piecemeal steps to be taking place if we're just trying to help people with their expectations. And that's kind of why I asked the question. Is that correct?
Yes, I, I think that's, that's very wise. You know, this disease is inherently stoppable. If you look at how difficult it is to stop an epidemic, and I would use the analogy with the AIDS epidemic, HIV, you know, we've been dealing with this since the early 80s, or, sorry, 70s, late, late 70s, early 80s, yes. And it has still, we continue to have cases, we continue to have new infections. You would think that in that span of time, that we would have figured out how to get rid of the illness. But it's, it's an illness that is difficult to eradicate from communities. People keep it for a life, a lifetime and it can continue to be spread. This disease is much easier, it's kept in the human body for a really short period of time when you compare it to the HIV virus. So if we just hold tight for a set period of time, we can make it, we can, we can starve it. We can, because it needs human bodies to continue to reproduce. And if we starve it from the ability to jump from human body to human body, we can stop it in its tracks. So I think the danger would be at the first sign that case volume is dropping, that we go back to business as normal and then we start to see more spike in activity. So I would, I would hate us to go through everything that we've just gone through and then have to repeat what, you know, repeat what we've just done.
Commissioner Madden has a question.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you so much for coming. Again, I know how busy you are. I did want to mention, you know, I've actually talked to citizens who've said they've had, um, recent chest pains, but they're gonna wait till after the virus is gone. And, you know, that's very concerning to me, um, to hear things like that. And I know that one of the strategies that we've heard is, you know, just kind of relegating the COVID patients to particular floors or particular facilities, um, so that you can still have the proper care for the rest of the citizenry on things that are equally life-threatening. And so, um, you know, what would you say, you know, going forward, it was, you know, set 15 days to slow the spread. Now it's 30 more days to slow the spread. I don't want people who are experiencing chest pains to not go to the doctor because they feel it's unsafe. So if Watson Clinic is not going to be the, um, area where COVID is, you know, being addressed the most, if that's gonna be at the hospital, is there an opportunity to open up a different, um, accessway to patients who are, you know, needing care, um, that don't have to have any fear that there's any COVID there? There's no one treating COVID there. It's a different, you know, you go into the facility, going through different doors, you're with different healthcare professionals taking care of you. Um, you know, what could you say, you know, if this goes two more months, I, I just need to know what to, that a tele-visit, I'm thrilled about that for, for kind of, for your triaging people who might have COVID and to encourage them to go get a test and to get, you know, tell them where to go, where the appropriate place is for COVID. Um, but certainly telehealth is not gonna help, you know, those folks who have other ailments or symptoms that could be, um, you know, equally life-threatening.
Yeah, I know, I totally agree with you. I would, I would first say that I would encourage people to get the care that they need. That's kind of what we've been saying throughout all this. So if you need something done, you're right, you're absolutely right. You know, by far, the leading, you know, cause of death among, among men and women is cardiovascular disease. And so it's very, very important to get those things addressed. Certain life-threatening conditions, however, really, under our current system, can really only be addressed in a hospital setting. So that's where we are really reliant upon the hospital to be able to, to be both. Uh, since we only have, if we have only one physical plant, that, to be able to treat both patients with cardiovascular disease that don't have the disease along with the patients who have COVID. And the hospital is, uh, segregating out the patient population. I don't want to obviously speak for their operation directly, but through my own experience rounding in the hospital, this is what I've seen. So they are grouping the patients with the COVID-19, uh, to get back, sometimes it goes back to the same thing, that the, the lag time on the testing becomes a bit of a problem because, uh, once the patients are in that unit, that we need that test back in order to get them out of it. So there is a, there is a developing population of patients currently at the hospital, you know, waiting four, five, six, sometimes seven or eight days still to get their results back. I think this is improving. I want to give some, I don't want to give the impression that it's not getting better. I, I believe that it is getting better. We are starting to see results come sooner, but getting those tests quickly is probably the best way, Ms. Madden, to get the patients appropriately identified and segregated from the general population. I still believe, though, that if you're having chest pains, you, let us address it, let us take care of it. Don't let the fear of this, um, convince you that you shouldn't be getting that checked out. Sometimes a chest pain is not something that's life-threatening at the moment and it can be handled in an outpatient setting and we can arrange for a cardiac catheterization and solve the problem with a stent before it becomes an issue. Uh, and that goes for lots of other types of ailments, for instance, um, gallbladder disease, for instance. So we're working on trying to do this as best we can. However, I would just sort of say that, you know, we had to, we had to shut down our surgical center because there was just nothing coming in to keep it open. And, um, unless there's some kind of, um, there's just nothing, there, if, there are certain facilities that just won't be oper- operational currently because they're designed to have a certain volume. Uh, so hopefully, you know, we, we can treat patients side by side in the hospital, um, safely and I, and I, and I, and I trust that we can. We'll just have to see how big, how, how high the numbers go, uh, before that becomes more of a concern. But right now, with these numbers, people should definitely, having, whoever it is that's deferring their chest pain, please, you know, they, they should get it checked out, uh, come to one of the urgent cares, make an appointment with their doctor. Um, but probably urgent care or the emergency room might be the appropriate place, right? Someone with chest pains.
You know, it's typical that, um, someone with chest pains can develop something within 14 or 15 minutes that becomes pretty crucial. And that's why when you have deep chest pains, I agree with, uh, the doctor that they should go to the hospital. We used to have the mantra, uh, that we talked about at the hospital, that time equals brain. And when you have a stroke or you have chest pains, you've gotta get there so that the blood is flowing and you can't, uh, mince with that. The hospital is working to be able to segregate quickly and separately, but you have to triage that person in that has those chest pains. So someone with chest pains needs to go, and needs to call 911 and, and probably go in an ambulance. Wouldn't you agree with that, sir?
Yes, yes, absolutely. I mean, it's business as usual for these emergencies. Please, don't, don't, people should not be deferring, you know, needed medical care.
Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you again to Dr. Ockinger for taking time out of your busy schedule. Uh, and I know you, as it was indicated to us before you came on, that you are making your rounds. So, uh, hopefully I won't take too much of your time to go do what you need to do with your patients. But I did hear you say, and I want to make sure I heard you correct, because I'm looking at some positive, positives that come out of this, maybe. Uh, 11% of, of who have been tested now, uh, have been, uh, tested, I guess, positively. Is that correct?
Well, I was giving you, um, just want to clarify that point. Obviously, I'm giving you up-to-date results from, you know, what we're seeing at our own facilities and that's all that I could, you know, tell you. Uh, but these were within, between March 29th and April 6th, you know, we received six results which were positive and this is, uh, on approximately 50 results that were sent. I'm sorry, 102 were sent, but only 51 had given us a result back yet. So there were six positives among that, among that number. So you start to see the number, even though we're testing roughly the same number of patients per day, we're bringing back more and more positive results. So this, I, I wouldn't want to try to read too much into it other than to say that we're all expecting the disease prevalence to, in Lakeland, to act like it's acted everywhere else around the world. It goes quickly in an exponential growth phase. So, uh, I don't know if you guys love math. I have, one of my things, I happen to love math, but exponential meaning that-
That does not surprise me.
Every single-
Oops. He may have gone to a spreadsheet to pick it again. I'm sure he'll come back in. I just- I, just the numbers that we have all seen in Polk County are up fifteen as of yesterday, over yesterday, which is a hundred and fifty-seven. Lakeland at thirty-four, which was up three. Uh, the state at thirteen thousand, three twenty-four, and, um, twenty-four hundred and thirty-seven people tested in Polk and four Polk County deaths to date.
Right, Mr. Mayor, and that was, I guess, it leads to my, my last question with him, but he's already off the, off the, off the pipeline here. But I wanted to ask, you know, other ones that have not been tested, other ones that have been tested positive and sent home, quarantined, self-quarantining themselves, what do you think that outcome would be for those? Do you have any kind of, do, do, anyone have?
Hello? So this is, this is Steve Akinger again. I'm sorry, uh.
Come back in.
A device died on us, I apologize for that.
That's all right. Go ahead.
I was using more juice than it was apparently able to draw out of the wall.
Well, anyway, you were talking about the math side, if you want to pick that up.
Oh, yeah. So exponential growth, meaning that every case is going to lead to, you know, on average, more cases. So every person that gets the disease will infect two more. That person will infect two more, for instance. And that's where you get sort of an exponential growth. Uh, once you get to the point where each case only infects one other person, then you start to plateau the incidence of the disease. So a couple of factors will, will impact that, and they are essentially, we're presuming that people are going to get immune to this once they've had it. We don't know that for a fact, but eventually, as, as an epidemic goes on, people that have acquired the illness and then have an, have an immunity to it, then cannot get reinfected. That's one thing that protects the rest of us. But also, um, you know, it just, if people start taking the quarantine measures more seriously as the disease gets more and more common, then we need to get to that point where every, every, every case does not infect more people. So right now, you know, I think we're, we're, we're probably in the early parts, which is, you know, we're seeing that exponential growth phase, and we just have to see how high, how the numbers go. These social distancing efforts that you guys have put into place will have their impact, but they're going to have their impact on the numbers that we're seeing in a, in a couple of weeks.
I guess that was where I was trying to lead to Dr. Akinger again, when you have both to be sent home to self-quarantine that may have been tested positive, but to a point where not to be hospitalized, but go home and self-quarantine yourself so you won't be, so you will not affect or infect someone else. That's why I think I appreciate your comment about what we did with closing the parks, et cetera, because at least we're knowing that we're doing some things that may be tough and not appreciative and not a good soundbite or not a good thing than some people are right now, but certainly it would play, hopefully pay off and be, be able to get these numbers down to where we want it to be so we can all get back into this game of things as you wish to do, as well for your occupation and your profession as well.
Yes, and I think too also I'd add to that, um, Mr. Walker, that patients have, you know, the, the other part of this is the, that I think informed some of these epidemiological recommendations were that there is a certain percentage of people who will shed the virus without, without symptoms. Uh, and so they will, they will walk around and not know they have it at all. So that's a difficult thing to deal with. You, you can't, by definition, you can't identify these folks. Uh, we can't identify these folks because we're specifically only testing people who have fevers and coughs. So, uh, we, unfortunately, since we're, we're blinded somewhat to all of that, so when somebody maybe has a question for you and says, why did you do that? You know, one of the things you can explain is that there is that, there is that percentage of population out there that will, will just carry the illness, but yet not get sick with it, and they can spread it to someone else. So, um, so that's, that's the other part of it.
And wouldn't know to get tested, which is why some people say that, you know, these are our positive results, and what's walking around is maybe as much as ten times that in terms of the results in the nation, I think is at two hundred and seventy-three thousand. So, you know, that you're talking about a couple million people that could potentially be carriers with seven thousand deaths, you know, to date. Other questions from commissioners? And yes, chat, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Akinger, for being here today and just sharing this update. You mentioned the nursing staff and other clinicians from Watson Clinic side who might be able to help at the hospital if, if they were needed. Is that ready to deploy? Is that something that can be done relatively easily if that, that need does come about?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're in direct, you know, we, we, we have direct ties with the, you know, we, we obviously, we speak with the hospital administration at least once per week, um, now that we're in this, uh, in this, and, and oftentimes it's more, it's more, it's more frequently than that. But yeah, they, they can get what, you know, when you have a practitioner in a hospital, they, they use what are called privileges. So normally you wouldn't just accept a new doctor onto the staff without first vetting their credentials and going through all of the rigmarole with that, but they will, they will grant our doctors temporary privileges if they, if they are someone who hasn't been in the hospital in, in some time. So they're, they, they've promised to be very flexible with us. So we do have a lot of physicians who, who, who can fill that gap. So I don't, I honestly don't think there's any concern that, that we would, that we would not have enough medical providers. And certainly we have a decent amount of, of clinical nursing staff that could also, also fill in if, if they so choose to. Obviously, that would be a voluntary basis. It's not something that, that I think the clinic would, would, would even be able to, to require of someone. Um, and then some of the, and a lot of these staff are, are under furlough, uh, so they would, they would be, you know, perhaps willing to work and, and, and work part-time for the hospital, for instance. But that hasn't been deployed yet. It's just I wanted to give you a flavor of the things that we talk about, um, just so if we get to, hopefully we won't get there. And I think with the things that you guys are doing, we may never, we may never get there. And I think that would be a big success for us, uh, because I've, I've had enough of coronavirus for right now, and, and the sooner it's gone, you know, the better. Um, we do have a lot of, a lot of clinicians who, who will rise to the occasion, you know, nursing staff and, and doctors who view it as their obligation to, to, to pitch in at a time of need like this. So some are, you know, ex-military, for instance, and, and understand that, 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 that concept of, of, of duty, you know, maybe more so than, than, than others. And, uh, but, 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 you know, the sense of duty does, is part of the medical profession, you know? We, and not just supposed to do this when the times are good, you got to do it when the times are rough too.
Commissioner Reed has a question.
Thank you, Doctor. There again, uh, I appreciate your being here today and talking to us. I think the information you're giving us, or at least to all of our citizens that are watching live, is very reassuring that all the things that are necessary are being done. Uh, I do have one question. Do we know how many people are on ventilators in our area?
I, I do not know that, and I think I probably would just defer that question to, if you, if you are communicating with Lakeland Regional. I, I, you know, we do have approximately, the number of intensive care unit beds they have is in the, is in the eighty range. Things that have been talked about have been, you know, repurposing anesthesia machines to use them as ventilators. But I, I'm not going to be able to give you a direct answer about the ventilator issue.
Thank you.
We can't, we can't get that number though. Commissioner Reed can get that to you. Commissioner Madden.
So, Dr. Akinger, I know that this is certainly not the number one priority, but I would, I would anticipate that soon, um, people would be interested in having the antibody test to see if they in fact have had it and are immune. Do you have plans to be able to offer those tests?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, yes, we have, we're in contact with the companies that are promoting those, those, uh, those tests. Um, I do want to make another mention of, of the test, the rapid, uh, the, the short answer on the antibody test is it's a work in progress, and yes, we, we will be looking forward to, um, to getting that type of capability. But first and foremost, I'd like to know what that, good that information will be. I think we really need to fully understand if these antibodies that are formed are protective or not. I think if it turns out that an antibody response is non-protective, then it might not be all that useful of information, and maybe we won't really pursue that. But if antibody tests do mean that you are immune to the illness, that's good information to have, especially if this becomes a, a long ongoing process, uh, and we're with coronavirus for a little while, even albeit at lower levels, that if we're still dealing with coronavirus, because it, it still is a highly infectious illness. Even if the numbers aren't, aren't particularly high, we still need to have the capability of dealing with this illness. But knowing if somebody is immune to it may be very helpful, especially among healthcare workers, to know that information. So, but I think we need to wait on the science on that regard, because I don't know how to interpret those results. I do want to mention, you, you may have heard the report of the Abbott test. Uh, this is a, it is a rapid test, uh, within hours. Uh, we have inquired to obtain that device from Abbott, uh, and they are just giving it out to, they're prioritizing it to highly affected areas. Uh, we were, we were not a highly affected area yet, so, so we are on the waiting list.
Is the antibody test also subject to duration typically? I mean, might it not be for a long period of time, or do you know?
I don't, I'm not sure. Typically, an antibody is going to take about six weeks to fully form, or four, four weeks after an exposure. So you'd be looking at testing people, you know, in the four to six week range after their COVID recovery.
And then typically, do those antibodies remain in the person as in to like next, this winter or in the spring? Or do you?
Yeah, it can, it can vary from illness to illness, but antibodies will, there, there's several different types of antibodies, but there are long-term antibodies which can reside within the patient's body for a lifetime. Um, so those antibodies are very useful for detecting exposure to illness. Um, those are the types of tests that are used to screen for illnesses such as hepatitis C, hepatitis B, HIV. They're all based on antibody responses.
Got it.
So it would be, it's a potentially very useful, uh, very useful test. However, I would just emphasize that we just need to know, does this give you protection from the illness? That's the key thing that I don't think has been answered yet.
Excellent. Any other questions? City Manager Delgado, anything you wanted to add?
No, other than the fact that we certainly appreciate all that Watson Clinic and Dr. Akinger are doing, and, um, we're here to work with him. I know he's very, very busy, and, uh, he's got to go ahead and make rounds, but we just thank him for being here.
Thank you very, very much, sir.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mayor and Commissioner. Uh, I really, really, and all the commissioners, I really, really appreciate, um, you know, the, you taking the time and, and frankly, the interest in hearing from us. It really means a lot.
Means a lot to us. Thank you.
All right. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Mr. Mayor, I think I'm Michael Spake, I think I'm Michael Spake prepared to go ahead and do a mini PowerPoint or of some sort.
All right. Is that correct, Kevin?
Yeah, and I'm just going to follow up with what City Manager Delgado stated. So what we're going to do, uh, Michael Spake is on the line, and he's, he's listed there, and we're going to run the presentation off my screen. So, Michael, can you hear us?
Yes, Kevin, I can.
Okay, I'm going to share the screen now, and let me know if everyone can see it. All right, Michael, take it away.
Well, thank you, Kevin. Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, thank you very much for the opportunity to hear from us today and give you a update on what we're facing today as well as planning for with the COVID-19 situation that we're all in our community are, are dealing with. Um, before I get started, I also want to thank Dr. Akinger and just the great work that his team is doing in conjunction with us and for his remarks today. And I think you'll hear that a lot of my remarks are very similar to his, as well as also complement a lot of what he mentioned about how we are both working together to, uh, again, tackle today's problem as well as prepare for what we think is, is to come. So thank you, uh, thank you for this opportunity on behalf of our board and, and all of our team members. Uh, Kevin, if you go to slide number two, uh, just really quickly, uh, from an agenda standpoint, of what our team has prepared for you today, uh, and thanks again for letting me come. Uh, Dr. Thompson right now is continuing to run our incident command center with our other senior executive leaders. Uh, but what I wanted to do today for you is provide a high level review of really what our current state is today, uh, talk to you a little bit about how we're optimizing as well as protecting our workforce, um, all the great work that has gone in to very quickly provide excellent patient care to not only the COVID-19 patients and COVID-19 rule-out patients that we're seeing, but also all the other patients that continue to come to us for care. Uh, we'll speak to you a little bit about our wonderful efforts in optimizing testing for our area and our community. Uh, next, as you know, um, we are desperately in search of protective, protection for our employees and our patients. Uh, so I'll give you an update on where we're at with supplies and equipment. Talk to you a little bit about how we are redesigning our, currently our facility. Uh, I believe Commissioner Madden mentioned how, uh, that we are identifying COVID units. So we're cohorting the COVID patients and COVID rule-out patients in one area of the hospital, uh, which, uh, gives them optimal care as well as assures other patients a, an environment that is protecting them at the greatest extent possibly. And then I just want to close a little bit with our communication efforts and talking with the community about that. So Kevin, if you go to slide number three, our current state, um, yesterday at nine o'clock at the medical center, uh, we had ninety-eight patients in a COVID-19 patient care unit. Uh, of these ninety-eight patients, four of them have been identified as positive COVID-19, and the others are awaiting test results and have a medical condition that requires them to have hospital-level care. Uh, looking at our real-time dashboard currently, uh, I'll give you a little bit of an update. As of three fifty today, uh, we have, actually, our patients have lowered to ninety-one patients in a COVID-19 patient care unit. However, our number of positive patients has gone up to five. Uh, Commissioner Reed, I believe, asked earlier about ventilator use. Uh, right now, uh, we have thirty-three patients using ventilators, and of those three, nine are either, uh, positive COVID or on a, are, are being ruled out as COVID, and that's thirty-three ventilators in all being used out of a today capacity of a hundred and seventy-five, which we all talked earlier about how we think we can greater optimize that to increase our capacity. Uh, as Dr. Akinger said, uh, the last two weeks probably seems more like two months, maybe two years. Uh, but if you go back to when we first began testing, uh, in our facilities as well as our ambulatory clinics, uh, today we have, um, received test results showing that twenty-three of patients have tested positive and a total of four hundred and seventy-nine have tested as negative. And that's since, um, March the twenty-fourth, um, and that includes both our inpatient medical center as well as our outpatient. What you'll hear going forward, uh, after this slide is that, um, it, we're continuing to, you know, come up, or we're continuing to care for these patients and have done a lot to put that into place before COVID was beginning in our community. And what you'll also hear though is really about what we are kind of labeling as the surge that we expect. Um, the state of Florida is, um, using several predictive models that have been developed across the nation. Uh, one of the ones they are looking at, as well as we're keeping our eye on, is out of the University of Washington School of Medicine's Institute for Health Metrics and Evaluation. Uh, those models, similar to what Dr. Akinger said, uh, does show that we are quickly getting to our peak. Uh, it appears that our peak is going to be somewhere near the end of April or the beginning of May. Uh, I'm not sure how much I would bet on May the second, but this, uh, particular model from the Institute of Health Metrics and Evaluation says that May the second, uh, will, will be at our peak. And so we are currently. And so, we are currently keeping our eye on that in terms of both today and what we need for tomorrow. If you turn to page four, a little bit about our Lakeland Regional workforce. We have been undergoing a significant workforce optimization schedule. We have a very comprehensive workforce development plan that allocates healthcare professionals and other support staff to areas of need, so that we are prepared for this surge. As you heard earlier, with the cancellation of elective surgeries and with the not seeing as many patients in our ambulatory clinics, we are taking that cohort of healthcare professionals, both physicians and support staff, nurses, CNAs, environmental care workers, and beginning to train them for areas of the hospital in preparation for us anticipating the need to see a significant higher number of patients in the hospital. As Dr. Akinger mentioned, from a medical staff plan, we're looking at a surge capacity model, and one of the key areas we're looking at is working with the Watson Clinic doctors and their anesthesiologists, clinical nurse anesthesiologists, and having them work with our current critical care physicians and developing clinical algorithms, so that they can help support our intensive care units as we see that volume of patients drastically increase. And then finally, under workforce optimization, we have sent communication out to our physicians and other providers in the Lakeland Regional Physician Group, mandating that they stay local for possible reassignment to the medical center during this period of the COVID-19 epidemic. So, we are corralling every able workforce professional possible right now and preparing them in a multitude of ways, so that we are ready in the near future. At the same time, it is equally protective in order to have this workforce for us to take extensive measures to protect them. With that, all locations and departments throughout the health system are undergoing additional and ongoing training about how to appropriately and discard personal protective equipment in order to prevent increased infections. We have developed what is defined internally as a susceptible team member policy. This allows, for instance, pregnant clinical team members to avoid COVID-19 rule-out floors or positive patient assignments, as well, under this policy, team members with certain health conditions can ask for a medical review for reassignment or a work-from-home exception. Today, we began initiating temperature and system checks for all team members, medical visitors, and medical staff members. So now, if you come into the hospital to visit someone, we will be taking your temperature. If your temperature is above 99.9, we will be asking you, whether you're a visitor, medical staff member, or a team member, to go home. In our corporate departments, we have gone through an extensive plan where we have team members alternating, where one set of team members work from home and the others come into the office. This is in order to allow the proper social distinct of six feet apart for all corporate employees at all times. And if we do have teams that are small numbers, for like my own, that, you know, we're able to move around six feet apart or stay six feet apart. So, again, we are making sure that all team members, whether they're in clinical sites or in corporate sites, respect and follow through with social distancing at this point. And then finally, we have developed telehealth processes that allow our specialist physicians, who would be called in to do a consult for an inpatient, to be able to do that through telehealth. This not only prevents consulting physician from putting him or herself at unnecessary risk, but also, and almost equally important these days, is it also conserves our use of personal protective equipment. If you go to page five, or slide five, Kevin, our clinical teams have done a miraculous job as a multi-disciplinary team, and immediately upon having this come upon us, establishing and operationalized clinical protocols, excuse me, clinical protocols across the entire health system, especially the medical center, for the testing, ruling out, and caring of COVID-19 patients. And this is all areas from labor and delivery to the emergency department, intensive care units, every single unit we have here in the hospital. And these are CDC and national COVID-19 guidelines. Also, as recommended by the CDC and national guidelines, we have completed a comprehensive engineering assessment in order to optimize and designate floors to be used for COVID-19 rule-out or positive patients. This allows for the best limitation of air exchanges between COVID rule-out and positive patients and non-COVID patient units. So, in essence, it cohorts the patients in an area that keeps other areas of the hospital quote-unquote "clean" from an air supply standpoint for our other patients. This is not only on the hospital floors, but is also, and very importantly, something we're doing in the emergency department. So, if you are coming in and have notified us that you think you might be COVID-19 positive or have been screened and coming in to be tested, we have dedicated pods within our emergency department, so that, again, we cohort these patients together for both their care, as well as the care of everybody else. At the medical center, we are actually training to have additional code teams in place, understanding that in the next few weeks, we could easily be placed in the situation where we have simultaneous codes, where patients will need to be resuscitated. We are training additional staff, so that we have multiple code teams. Our medical surgical nurses are being trained for ICU floors, so as we see patients needing higher levels of care, again, we want to make sure we have that workforce that's trained, that can best care for our patients. At the Lakeland Health Physician Group, we have initiated telehealth visits for all patients that can be safely treated in the telehealth environment. Again, this not only conserves PPE, but also protects our patients and our physicians. Anything we can do to help treat a patient, and they can do that from home and not have to get out, that's, you know, potential fewer infections and it allows us to preserve equipment needed when the time comes. For COVID-19 patients, we have implemented and established a drive-through clinic whereby they can have their results, their blood results tested and delivered and not leave the car. And again, this is to limit the exposure of patients. And then finally, our ethics committee are continuing meeting throughout the day and are basically conducting meetings to best support our clinical teams, patients, and families, not only today, but in preparation. Someone mentioned earlier in the meeting, mental health. This is also a significant conversation that we're having across our team members with the help of Alice Nuttall, who's our Director of Behavioral Health Services, understanding that we are all going through a lot of stress right now, we're going through a lot of grief right now, and making sure that we're able to have patients or have team members at their optimal is something, again, we're taking very serious in terms of mental health, as well as protections from the COVID-19 virus. On page six, our chief operating officer and lab services personnel have just been working around the clock every day since this began, doing everything possible to optimize testing for our community. Last week, we opened a LRM C employee testing facility, which is located at our family health center across the emergency department on Parkview Avenue. We have also opened this up, understanding how important it is to keep our first responders healthy and on their jobs. We have also opened this up to both the county and city first responders. We are diligently working to have the ability, hopefully in four to six weeks, to run our own COVID testing in-house, rather than having to send them out to reference labs. We are currently awaiting the delivery of two testing platforms from two different companies, either of which provide us the ability to perform in-house COVID-19 testing. Currently, one of the challenges is that laboratory supply companies that are the ones that are delivering these platforms are prioritizing delivery of devices and test kits based on need. We are actively working to escalate ourselves to a higher need, based on our size and patient population, in hopes of, and speaking with, at higher levels in these organizations about our situation, that we could get these possibly earlier. I cannot thank Tony Delgado, Tony Camarilla, and all of the city staff who really came together quickly in an exciting way to collaborative work, collaboratively work, and prepare a drive-through testing center at the RP Funding Center. Our expectation right now is that will be operational by April the 20th. In addition to optimize our testing, we're in discussions with various labs, reference labs across the state in the southeast that are promising quicker results and turnaround times in order to augment our current processing. However, what we have seen recently, and kudos to Dr. Jackson and her staff, the Polk County Department of Health is returning right now test results within about a 48-hour timeframe for hospitalized patients, as well as healthcare professionals needing testing. And also, we really appreciate at this time our partners down at Tampa General, or they have the ability to run COVID tests in-house, and they have recently, with some of our highest priority testing, have done these, and they've returned, test results have been 24 hours. These particular high priority tests have been in situations where we've had an expectant mother that we needed to rule out, whether she was COVID-19 or not, because they are very complicated procedures for when the baby is delivered, to ensure that they have appropriate respiratory care. On page seven, for supplies and equipment, as I mentioned earlier, and you probably have read in many media publications, we're in a national crisis with respect to needed supplies and equipment, especially personal protective equipment. And when I mentioned about this surge that we see from predictive analytics that we think is coming in a few weeks, we have set a procurement target based on the following assumptions. We are preparing ourselves to obtain supplies and equipment to handle 1,000 patients in the medical center. We expect about 70% to be in some type of isolation, 50% to be under some type of intensive care unit care, with 50% of those being on ventilators. And we're expecting this to be for a four-week period without replenishment. So, in terms of, I'll just use personal protective gear as an example, we are attempting to essentially garner enough PPE that when this surge hits, we will be able to handle 1,000 patients every day for four weeks without having to procure any other supplies or needs. So, as you can imagine, we have procurement teams across all divisions. They are working both traditional and non-traditional avenues, and I can honestly say to the Commission today that this is a global search. We are reaching out to contacts who have contacts in the Far East, in Europe, South America, and all over the United States, to ensure that we're best prepared to take care of our community and our workforce during this expected time. With that, we have created some very unique and sophisticated information systems, almost like an air traffic controller at an airport. We can track the daily use and inventory of all of our PPE, which has been exceptional in terms of maintaining our current supply, as far as, as well as reaching out to find additional needed products. We have purchased additional coat carts, monitors, body bags, and other needed equipment. Again, we want to make sure that we are prepared. I spoke about our ventilator capacity. We have gone through an extensive engineering evaluation and clinical evaluation of our ventilator capacity, and have confirmed that we can bifurcate most of our equipment, leading to the ability to ventilate approximately 175 to 350 patients, if necessary. And then finally, if you've driven by the medical center in the last week, you've probably noticed some trucks on-site. We are, we've obtained additional storage for key supplies, as well as more capacity, and there's an ongoing evaluation, almost on a daily basis, for additional off-site storage for the potential buildup of inventory. On slide eight, I mentioned that we have optimized our facility through some re-engineering. I already mentioned that we have dedicated COVID units on both the inpatient floors, as well as the emergency department. On April the 13th, we plan to open the ambulatory clinic located at 130 Pablo Street as an off-campus respiratory clinic for COVID-19 symptomatic patients. This is the clinic that is almost at, basically at the corner of Edgewood in South Florida. We feel like this is the largest clinic with space to do this, that is most proximate to the hospital, and would allow us to, as we talked about earlier, for patients who needed care but didn't necessarily need hospital-based care, it would provide an opportunity for respiratory care at that clinic. With that, we're continuing to assess every piece of our campus to, where we might be able to put a bed for an inpatient or an outpatient. We're talking with the Lakeland Surgical Diagnostic Center, which is the Ambulatory Surgery Center, on our campus, as well as in conjunction with the state of Florida. We're also exploring, if needed, non-traditional potential sites, such as hotels and other large spaces. From a facility standpoint, we've also had to roll out a new visitation policy for the protection of our patients and team members. This is a very restrictive policy that's been placed into effect at both our inpatient medical center, as well as our ambulatory clinics. We are also screening visitors, and as I mentioned, also using infrared thermometers to begin temperature assessments at all location entrances. And then finally, on page nine, as I mentioned at the beginning, since this began, we opened up our 24/7 Emergency Operations Command Center with management by Dr. Thompson as the Incident Command Center Director. She's being supported by all of our senior management. And sort of an analogy, this is the similar setup, but much more intense and much more labor-intensive, similar to how we did for Hurricane Irma, where essentially all communications and really puts all of our focus on this current situation as much as we can. We have sent out broad community communications through our regional media outlets. I think just yesterday, some of our team members spoke to the Ledger about nursing care and sort of how that is occurring in our medical center. And then I think tomorrow, some of our team members are talking again to the Ledger about lab testing. We have sent mass mailings to our Lakeland Regional patients, and then we're also trying to optimize social media and our internet page. And, you know, want to thank Kevin Cook, as well, as we've tried to coordinate our messaging, so that whether you go to the city site or you go to the Lakeland Regional site, you know, we have a lot of good, consistent message on what to look for, how to cater for yourself, as well as where to go if you feel like you need assistance during this time. as well as where to go if you feel like you need assistance during this time. Monday through Friday, internally, we have management calls. This gives us the opportunity to communicate protocols, changing PPE supplies and assist team members and taking care of themselves as well as patients. We have each and the end of each day, we have executive leadership calls to assess what needs to be done tomorrow. Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we're participating with the Florida Emergency Operations Center with Secretary Mayhew and the Surgeon General in terms of how Florida hospitals are preparing and dealing with COVID-19. And then from some proactive measures, we have been in contact with funeral home directors regarding CDC recommendations for handling of COVID-19 deceased. We've also been in conversation with our local skilled nursing facilities and discussing things such as PPE needs as well as future capacity needs. And then lastly, you know, we just have great, great providers in this community and, you know, having weekly phone calls with them, the Watson Clinic. And I can say from a medical standpoint, this is a time where, you know, we're all coming together to do what we can to take care of patients and be prepared. So hopefully, that was a comprehensive overview of a lot of the great work that's going on right now, preparing for a very hard time that we feel like is coming. You know, we, our teams are very well-trained. We feel like they're very well-prepared and, you know, we're here, we're here, we're ready to provide safe and effective care and take every step we can to protect you, our community, and everyone during this public health emergency. So with that, I would be happy to take some questions and if there are any.
First of all, Michael, thank you so much for the preparation and presentation of that. We've had a lot of people within the community that are confident that our medical staffs are working together and developing some plans, but I think this helps put some meat on the bones for people to be able to read and see some of that on the outward basis. And I know under every one of those points, there are 10 sub-points as you go along in terms of that preparation. So it gives you a sense of the preparation. Secondly, from my standpoint, the May 2nd peak date is an important date for us to think about, watch for, prepare, be vigilant, calling us all to be more vigilant where we are right now. Wonder what other commissioners might have some comments? Commissioner McCauley.
Michael, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me, but thank you, Michael Spake, for coming in and sharing so much detail with us. I think the three things that I don't necessarily have a question, but that are really highlights that I picked out of this are, number one, your partnerships with your local providers and with TGH and around the community at large, we sincerely appreciate as a commission. We're only as good as all the partners we have at the table. So the fact that you guys are working so diligently with one another, Mr. Ackinger or Dr. Ackinger as well, I think it gives a lot of credibility to our response, and I think it also adds to our comfort and the care that you're providing the community at large. So thank you for that. One question really quick, though, that I actually have, and then I have another comment after, is you talked about the pods that you work with, you know, to hold patients. And I know that that was built and developed through the emergency department several years ago, I think. I just wanted clarification on the history of that because I think the forethought and the leadership that we have at Lakeland Regional is really important to highlight right now that you are prepared. So could you talk about the history of that pod area again really quick?
I will do my best, but you know, as you know, back in 2010, 2011, going into 2012, we did a massive re-engineering of our emergency department. And you know, you speak of physician partners, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Dr. Milton and the leadership of him and his emergency department group in re-engineering that, as well as all of our staff throughout the hospital to understand and appreciate what the needs are in order to get a patient into the emergency department, quickly triage and assess, and then either provided the information to be discharged home or be placed in a bed within a three-hour timeframe. And a lot of that dealt with redesigning the beds basically into pods. And so we have several pods based on number. And as Commissioner McCauley mentioned, we have dedicated pods now for COVID, potential COVID-19 patients so that we can isolate them from the rest of the emergency department.
And the second thing I wanted to ask actually is, when we discuss this medical surge, I mean, I feel like it's parallel to a hurricane, unfortunately with water. But when we keep, I've been on several conference calls, as have my colleagues in the last couple of weeks, and that was the one term that has popped out at me several times, is this surge that we're looking at and the peak that would be May 2nd, May 3rd in that area based on the models. With regards to that, can you, our one takeaway, I would assume, is to encourage people that if they aren't, you know, if they're healthy and they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, that the takeaway from this would be to stay home. Would that be correct in the assumption that we could manage that surge a little bit better by maybe all staying in place?
I think, and we as a team remind ourselves that right now, social distancing is our friend in terms of trying to prevent that surge from being higher than it could be without, you know, certain protective measures. And I was speaking with someone the other day and, you know, reminded that, you know, this is indeed an opportunity, so to speak, or a time for our entire community. Our entire community can do something to help with this. And I think, again, that is, that is social distancing and being cognizant of your symptoms, how you feel, and being respectful that, you know, staying at least six feet apart appears, at least in the models we've seen and looking across to the east, that it is an effective mitigation process.
Was that, were you recognizing me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I saw your point, but didn't want to assume. Thank you, Michael, for coming on today and providing this information. I just wanted to ask, and I know that our city manager and the mayor are in regular communication with you and Dr. Thompson and your leadership. Are there things that we can be doing as a legislative body, as the city commission, to support and just augment what the hospital and healthcare providers are doing over the next few weeks? And I mean, I obviously think regular communication is vital. This is a big part of that, having you and others on the call. But I just, I wondered if you had any thoughts on, are there things that we could be doing that are important to support the medical community during this time?
Thank you, Commissioner McLeod. You know, I would say, and this goes as a way of thanks, you know, we appreciate your thoughtfulness over the last two to four weeks. We're all in a time that we've never faced before. We're having to make difficult decisions at a very rapid speed. And, you know, we appreciate how thoughtful you all have been and the many, many considerations, not only for the healthcare sector but for everyone that has been impacted in our community by this. Another piece I would, you know, again, say as a thanks is, there have been several commissioners as well as several community members who have stepped up and contacted me or contacted the hospital and said, I know someone who has a supply of X. Can they donate them to you? You know, we've had community members contact us saying, I'm not an essential business, but I'm willing to take my product offline and try to build you protective equipment or hand sanitizer. So, you know, I think to your point, Commissioner McLeod, thoughtfulness and communication are very key to this. We are always happy to speak with the commissioners, come to the commission meetings during this time or any other time because that communication is so very important. And again, you know, speaking up when, you know, there might be someone that, you know, maybe has had to close their doors, has some protective wear or other things, has been a huge help for us in maintaining the supplies that we need.
Excellent. And Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you again to Mrs. Spake, Michael Spake, for coming and sharing as you did. But, you know, Lakeland Regional Medical Center, emergency room being one of the largest trauma centers in our state, what, how can you speak to what effects it may have had, you know, with what we deal with as it is, being the critical trauma center versus what we deal with now with COVID-19?
When you're referring to that...
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Walker, are you talking about trauma center or the ER?
ER.
Okay.
I think overall, we have, as a hospital, have spoken to this and maybe haven't spoken enough about it, but as a large safety net hospital that cares for such a broad reason, region, that has such a wonderful supply of physicians, you know, we're able to do procedures and see patients with certain conditions in the hundreds more than if we were a smaller hospital. And so being able to have done so many of procedures, so many of certain assessments, being familiar, you know, having more infectious disease doctors has provided us with much better quality. And I think with that, it has positioned us very well to be able to respond to this situation in a much greater way than if we were a smaller hospital that, you know, didn't have the training in trauma, didn't have the training in NICU, didn't have the, you know, all of the physicians that we have here today.
Excellent question. Thank you very much for asking and appreciate their response, and we are grateful for that, Mr. Spake. Other questions or Commissioner Madden?
Thank you so much, Michael, for coming again today. It is just so reassuring to see all of the plans that you've been putting into place. And certainly, we are blessed in Lakeland that, you know, we were not first to be hit, but we've had actually a couple of weeks to be able to prepare. Although even though we knew about this coming, in the call this morning with the county, they were mentioning how 92 million N95 masks were on order, but those were going to priority areas. So even though I know you and the Watson Clinic have gone to great lengths and strides to try to get that PPE and those N95 masks, because we haven't had the numbers, it sounds like we have not made the priority on the list, even though we had our orders in a month ago. I also was aware of Director Maskowitz. He was really championing, you know, Florida and N95 masks and kind of advocating and, you know, kind of calling out 3M on different news shows to say, why are these distributors giving it to foreign countries? Why are these distributors, you know, giving it to people for cash and not going with the prioritized list of folks who already had their orders in, who are trying to be ahead of the curve and make these preparations in advance? The also, the other thing that was said on the call this morning was a little disconcerting is that there's this unknown algorithm to distribute the masks. So if those things are all the case, you know, if it's going to go to prioritize area and if we have 92 million masks on order, but somehow, you know, we're falling down on the list, whether through them, you know, masks going to foreign countries or because the algorithm is not pointing to Polk County or Lakeland as a high priority, how likely do you think we are to be able to get higher prioritizations? Is there a certain number of cases or deaths that, you know, constitute a higher priority on the list? What is your analysis of that?
Thank you, Commissioner Madden. And I am not very well up to speed on the algorithms of the need base in terms of ventilators and N95 masks that Dr. Maskowitz spoke about recently. However, I mean, I will share with you that we are getting, we are continuing to get in daily shipments of N95 masks. I will, before the end of tomorrow, try to get you a exact quantity of what we have as well as how many days that's worth. But this is also an area where I would say, you know, we, again, have just been very blessed with such great community members, you know, any, you know, folks from Florida Southern realizing that, you know, they're close to the year, donated an enormous amount of supplies to us. We've gotten things, we've gotten masks from, from the Polk County schools. You know, today I got a call with someone that had masks and they were in a non-healthcare sector that wasn't an essential business. And so, you know, we're looking to donate them. So again, you know, this is where, you know, I say, we're looking at non-traditional as well as traditional procurement sources, just because we know the traditional ones, as you said, right now through different mandates at higher levels of government are respectfully going to areas of need.
Excellent. Other questions? All right. City manager Delgado, anything to add?
No. Once again, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank Michael for being here. Obviously, we're close personal partners with LRH and Watson Clinic. The folks at LRH are doing a phenomenal job keeping us posted on a regular basis. Michael is a great conduit for our team. I know him and Audrey Kane have become close personal friends as well as everybody at the RP Funding Center. And so we'll continue to go ahead and use that conduit. I know everybody over at LRH is very busy, and Michael's been fantastic at keeping us posted.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And closing, I would just, if I could just have one more word. I know I spoke a lot about the great partnerships we have on the clinical front, but I would be remiss to not say that they are equally strong on the community front. Businesses across the city have reached out to us in multiple ways to help us and really just kudos to our business community here. Publix has been a significant help to us in terms of storage with food, which is another item that we're making sure we have. And then our partners through the Chamber and LEDC have just been phenomenal, answering the call to help us with some of the materials and supplies that we need.
Thank you. That's harmful. Mr. Cook?
Michael, before you get off the phone, I want to thank you, but our social...